This conference will now be recorded.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, Council. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss this very important topic with you. Hopefully, you found the information that I provided you. Hopefully, it was it was complete and met your satisfaction. So this evening, I'd like to go through some slides that I have, kind of hit some high points of the memo, and then hopefully you have lots of questions for me regarding our street system. So Richard helped me earlier today on sharing the presentation, so hopefully we can get it up and go OK. Wow, can everybody see it OK?
Yes.
All right, great. So I'll start off with a little bit of a background of what we have inside our city limits. We have approximately 42 miles of paved road and almost two miles of gravel streets. Some of the council might remember back in 2019 that we had a presentation from Amerio. They are an engineering firm that did a pavement management report for us, which talked about the pavement condition index. So at that time, they surveyed every street in the city, and our pavement condition index came out to be 58, which is really very low in the fair category. The fair category is a condition index of 56 to 70. And then the report also stated at the time that if the city wanted to or could had the resources to fund the maintenance and repair costs for our current transportation system, that we have $26.73 million worth of unfunded maintenance and repair. And if we were to address that on a yearly basis, that we would need to spend approximately 1.25 million a year just to keep the current pavement index of 58 PCI, which is a lot of money just to keep it where it is. Let me see what the next slide. And before I go to this one, also, if we were to improve our street condition and shoot for in the good category, the low end of the good category, we would need to spend close to $2.5 million a year over the next 10 years to address that backlog of work to get us our pavement condition index up into the good category. So I, as staff, city manager, and myself and others, and I'm guessing that each of you receive on some sort of a regular basis, maybe once a month or so, some sort of a concern from our Cottage Grove residents about the current condition of the city streets. In fact, today, we received an email on a potable spotter that shared that we have a gravel street down there off, I believe it's Q, that next to the greenhouses, that is in rather poor condition. So, you know, we hear it on a regular basis, and I'm guessing that you do too. So I took the surveyed segments and found that there was approximately 42% of the segments in our road system that currently, or back in 2018, were in the poor, the very poor or serious condition. So I'm guessing that if you drive down Row River Road in front of the car dealerships or you travel down 16th Street and get into some of the streets like Bryant and some of those areas, you'll see that those streets are really in very poor condition and need some immediate attention. So as I stated earlier, and I misquoted some numbers here, but if we were to keep our current pavement condition index, it'd take 1.4 million per year for 10 years, and to improve it to 72, which is satisfactory or good, it would take $2.87 million. And finally, to improve us to 80, which is in the upper end of satisfactory, it would be 3.6 million per year for 10 years to address, to improve the streets. This is kind of a caveat. When I prepared this item, oil prices were considerably lower. I mean, if you have monitored the gas pumps lately, we experienced just a 50 cent increase in our fuel costs over this weekend, over the last three days. And respectfully, or respective, the oil prices, barrel prices have gone up considerably too. And that will increase the cost of doing the work because oil is used in creating pavement and many of the products that are used in our street maintenance. Presently, Amerio is currently resurveying the pavement condition on all the streets, and I expect to have a report to present to the city council in July of this year of the current pavement condition index. We'll be able to refer to what it was back in 2018 and what it is in 2022. For just a little reference, in our street fund, our adopted budget. So in 2021 to 22, we have an estimated revenue of $1.377 million in the street fund. So to break that down into where that money comes from, we estimated $375,000 in local gas tax. We receive from the state through the state highway fund. We projected $769,000 this last year. And just a little reference, we receive each year from LOC, our League of Oregon Cities, projections for the future years of street funding or state highway apportionment funding. And that is based on per capita, so we receive a certain amount of money for each individual that lives in our city. When we prepared this budget, we estimated or calculated this number based on our Portland State's population estimate of, I believe at that time, it was 10,151 or 52, somewhere in there. And then the most recent number that we have now is 10,792. So that we have a considerable amount of increase in population. And the point I'm trying to make here is that that is going to increase the revenue that comes from the state by, I believe it's close to $60,000. The next area that we receive funding, and you probably remember this one pretty well because we generally come to you for approval to request this funding. It's the federal urban aid funding. It's the funding that runs through the state. And we receive that money, and the state takes a portion of it. It was 6 cents per thousand or 6%, and now it's going to be 10% of the cost. And then we have a small miscellaneous revenue. That would be if we sold a piece of equipment at an auction or something like that. That would be miscellaneous revenue. We also collect for every house that's built up in the Sunrise Ridge development. We receive $250 for each home, and that money is set aside in an account for us to tap into when Phase 2, when we meet a certain threshold of development in that area. We will be required to install a traffic light at the intersection of M and Main Street. And the final place where we receive revenue is we receive a transfer from the Storm Drainage Fund. Last year, it was $51,000. This money, we, before last year, 100% of the street sweeping fund was paid for out of the street fund. We proportioned it to where 75% of that fund is paid for, or the cost of street sweeping is paid for by the Storm Drainage Fund, and 25% by the street. Because the logic behind that was is that the street sweeper is picking up leaves, dirt, and items that stay out of our storm drainage system. It's part of our requirements for our discharge permit, which was talked about at our last city council meeting about the items that we do. The reason that we transfer $51,000 from that and not actually pay for all the items, 75% in the Storm Drainage Fund, is is we just left the personnel that was charged, personnel costs that was charged to street sweeping. We left it all in the street fund and just transferred money to cover that expense. So when we go into the adopted expenses for this current fiscal year, we have 3.79 FTE and a cost of $380,000. We have an additional $200 and almost $20,000 in materials and services. And that breaks down into, we pay for the street lighting. So the electric bill for the street lighting is budgeted $85,000 a year. We also carry a fund that, a portion of it in the sign and signal repair. We contract with ODOT to do the maintenance and any type of issues with our street lights. They do. And then we also have signs we replace that are aged out or hit by other vehicles or just need to be replaced. We also budget $30,000 for contractual services. So if we had a street failure that had to be addressed immediately, we would go into the maintenance fund. Some sort of a patch or a failure that had to be addressed quickly, we would tap into those contractual dollars. And then this past year, we budgeted $10,000 for equipment rental. We rented a crack sealing machine, and that's where those expenses came from. And the street sweeper costs in the street fund is $82,000. That's why our total operating expenses is right at $685,000 for just to pay for our staff and do the day-to-day maintenance operations of our system. So just a little background for the allocated funds for capital improvements. In 2021, there was approximately $600,000 that we allocated that was left over from operations in the total revenue. We allocated $50,000 to equipment. That was the Caterpillar skid steer that we purchased. That was a quarter of the cost for that piece of equipment. Then we did the chip seal on Gateway. That was right at $100,000 for that project. We also have allocated and haven't done any yet and still plan to before July 1st to do some actual street digouts where we have some major cracking in rough areas in our streets. Our staff, we purchased $50,000 worth of crack sealing sealant, and our staff did approximately 400,000 lineal feet of crack sealing. If you drive down River Road, it's pretty easy to see that the amount of crack sealing that was done through that area. We also have budgeted, whoops, we also have budgeted for, yet in this fiscal year, was is to do a chip seal from River Road from Harrison Bridge to West Main Street. This is not going to be, this will be a little different type of a chip seal than was applied on Gateway. The product that was applied on Gateway, when you do a chip seal, it basically applies the aggregate on an even basis, consistent even basis throughout the entire strip. There is a method that allows for the rock and the emulsion to mix. And there's a piece of equipment that comes behind it, and it actually grades the rock into the low spots so that it fills the voids, and it's not, it just doesn't replicate what exists on the current road condition. So it's a product that intrigued me to see if we could put that on River Road. And if it met our expectations, it could extend the life of River Road out five to possibly 10 years, depending on the use on it. So we'll try to do that. And then we would carry forward approximately $185,000 towards street repaving in 2022, 23. There's also $450,000, so I'll be presenting to the city manager and then hopefully to city council for our 2022, 23 budget. An allocation of $450,000 that would be used to match a portion of the Main Street rebuild grant if we're successful in receiving that grant from the Economic Development Administration. We would also be allocating the same 400, and then additional $450,000 in 2023, 24 for that project. That would cover nearly 90% of the match required for the project, and the rest of the match would come in in kind and also any type of utility infrastructure that we need to replace in Main Street to accomplish the project. So I wanted to give a little perspective of our operating expenses over the last, looks like seven, eight years. So in 2014, we budgeted right at $606,000. There was three FTE that were allocated to the street fund. And as you look through there, you know, we held a pretty consistent, we did increase the FTE a little bit, but you'll notice that the actual expenses didn't go up with those additions. And one of the reasons that is is because we've had senior employees in the utility division that have either moved on to other positions or retired. And when we bring in a newer employee and bring them in at more of an entry level, we save a considerable amount of expenses for that. We did see an increase in 2020. Some of that was, we did have summer hires. We had additional expenses that brought that up. But then, as we moved the sweeper costs in 2021, we saw us back, back down. The expenses, the operating costs are still over an eight-year period fairly close. They are increasing, but fairly close to what they were back in 2014. So I wanted to share just a little bit about some of the capital projects since I became a city employee in 2017 to what we've done through 2021. Back in 2017 and 18, we repaved a portion of South 6th Street from Highway 99 to Johnson Street. And we also repaved the travel lanes in Mosby Creek from Thornton Lane to the city limits right in front of Starfire. You might remember that both of those roads were in very, very poor shape and deteriorating fast. So we committed those resources to do that. We also, when I arrived, there was a grant for a pedestrian crossing across Row River Road there near Walmart. And that was installed. And there was also there on Gateway at the Vintage Inn and Kentucky Fried Chicken. We, that turned into the truck stop, and out of the truck stop was, I mean, it was a major pit. We were receiving complaints from people on a regular basis and folks turning in their damage to their cars and their front end alignments and that on a regular basis. So in that year, we spent $906,000 for those projects. And $75,000 of that money came from the ODOT grant for the pedestrian crossing. 2018, we did repairs on bridges. We repaired the Main Street Bridge here in front of City Hall. We also addressed issues with the Silk Creek Bridge and Harrison Bridge. Those were each on a regular basis. All of our bridges are inspected by ODOT. And we are charged with making the repairs necessary to keep them safe for our users of the roads. We also rebuilt the railroad crossing at South 6th Street. And the total of the expenditures that year was $1,100,000. In 2019 and 20, we completed the construction of the Swinging Bridge. We also rebuilt the railroad crossings of Lard and Chamberlain. Our crew did approximately 100,000 lineal feet of crack sealing in the streets. And the total cost for all that was $1.172 million. $200,000 of that came from the Oregon State's Park Grant for the Swinging Bridge reconstruction. In 2020, 21, we embarked on the Safe Routes to Schools project. And the amount of money that was spent through the street fund was $1.85 million. And a little over, approximately $1.27 million was a grant from the Safe Routes to Schools through the ODOT Oregon Department of Transportation program. And then this year, as I shared, we've, we chip sealed Gateway from Harvey Road to East Main Street. We crack sealed. And to date, we've spent $3,660,000 that were funding that came from the street fund, and 1.5 million was from grants. I want to share just a little more context so you'll tell yourself, well, how did we stretch? How did we get $3.6 million for those, actually, four and a half years worth of projects at $600,000 a year? When I came here, we had a pretty robust savings account from the Urban, from the Urban Aid Fund, excuse me. It was in excess of $1 million, and so we were able to supplement the money that we bring in from the street fund for capital projects each year with that money. And that helped us accomplish these projects over the last five years. So I wanted to share with you, we contracted with Amerio to look at, I believe it's eight, yes, eight projects, sections of road in the city that, you know, need to be, have some large investments in repaving, reconstruction. So I wanted to share with you some costs for those various different projects. So the portion of Row River Road from Thornton to Curran Boulevard, which is that section in front of the car dealerships, would cost approximately $406,000. And with a 30% contingency, which in today's world may not be enough, that project total cost would be potentially around $528,000 to do that. It would be a base enhancement to the road. And there would also be a couple ADA ramps that needed to be addressed. They don't meet standard under today's rules. The project from East Whitaker, so from East Main Street, as you go underneath the I-5 underpass and go over the top of the hill there at 22nd and down to Thornton Lane, that section of road would, with contingency, be approximately $493,000 to grind it up and then repave it and also address the ADA component. All of these include additional costs for ADA. They also include some, so then the North 16th Street, I'll break out just a little further. That is from essentially Main Street there and headed north to Austrender. That section of road is failing pretty good there, close to Safeway. And then really failing, I think it's almost turned back to gravel as you get down towards Austrender. That total project cost is $3.2 million with contingency. But there's approximately $1.2 million worth of utility lines that's included in that cost. So brings it down to approximately $2 million for the actual street costs. And then you can go further down. There's approximately $40,000 of that project that would be sidewalks that either need to be upgraded. And in some cases, there's no sidewalks in that stretch of road. That $40,000 would be the portion of the cost of the sidewalks that the adjacent landowner would be required under our city code to pay for. North Gateway from the Vintage Inn entrance to the truck stop. If you get off of the freeway or turn off of Row River Road on the gateway and you happen to be in that truck lane, that is the section of road that was proposed to grind and repave. And that portion would cost approximately $165,000 to do that. On the Douglas Street, Douglas Street is in really poor position or condition. It's the section from the wastewater treatment plant to the Lard. And that project estimated cost would be just right at a half a million dollars. River Road from Witten Bridge to Harrison. So if we did not apply the chip seal product to it and we move forward with the actual reconstruction of the entire section of River Road from Witten Bridge to Harrison, it would have cost approximately $1 million. Bryant, so if any of you councillors have been and happened to drive down Bryant, it is a road that has substandard curbs, gutters. It's really essentially a total rebuild of the road at a cost of about $1.2 million. Some of the reasons why costs like Bryant and, and you'll, we'll find many of the streets in Cottage Grove, they were actually built right on the dirt or the clay. When we've done some projects over in Bryant or in that area of town, a piping project or repair, the grayish-white clay that's in that area is right underneath the pavement. So there's no base to these roads. And it's quite surprising to me actually that some of these roads actually have lasted as long as they have because they're probably 40, 50 years old and built back in those days. I guess that was the standard, but today's standards, we would, we would apply some sort of aggregate base based on the level of traffic and the weight of the traffic. Most of our common neighborhood streets would require probably six inches of aggregate, compacted aggregate. And then we would put at least a four-inch lift of asphalt on top of it. And as we get to something like Row River Road where we have log truck traffic on it, that base is anywhere from 12 inches to 18 inches of aggregate with a six-to-eight inch lift of asphalt on top of it. So that would be kind of the difference between the type of roads and based on the So that would be kind of the difference between the type of roads and based on the, the actual use of vehicles and their weight. And the final project that I had estimated was, it's kind of the West Harrison project portion. So if you were on Harrison Road and you cross River Road headed to R Street, if you've been through that little kind of S curve area, that portion of the road is very, is failing and has alligated really bad. And it needs a complete base enhancement and repave. Had a estimated cost of three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So those eight projects with contingency would total approximately seven and a half million dollars in cost if we were to able to essentially deploy, get the money deployed and, and get these roads fixed here in the very near future. Just to kind of also break it down just a little bit, I mentioned earlier on the Sixteenth Street that there's about one point two five million that would be paid by other utility funds. So actual street fund costs with contingency for that project, for those projects would be about six point three million dollars. We estimate that it would be approximately two to three years, possibly three and a half years to actually design and complete the construction of those eight projects. And upon completion, the pavement condition index, it's hard to estimate what, what it would bring our, our total street pavement condition index up to from the fifty-eight that exists today. But in talking to the engineers from Amerio, that they would estimate that it would bring the condition index up about in the low sixties, so sixty-one, sixty-two PCI. So kind of wanted to talk about, we understand what, you know, what our system has for the amount of streets. We've kind of talked about our revenue that, that we generate each year that's allocated towards the street fund. And we've also talked about several different projects and their costs. So I kind of wanted to, to speak a little bit to the various different potential funding options that could be used to enhance the revenue so that we can actually do these projects. So currently under Cottage Grove's municipal code, chapter five point two six, we have a three, three cent per gallon gas tax. And our, our essential bookkeeping over the last fifteen years or so has showed that our citywide gas tax is, has been pretty consistent, anywhere from three hundred and fifty thousand to sometimes a little over four hundred thousand a year for that three, three cents per gallon. One of the things that I think is, is telling with the gas tax is, is that our population has increased significantly since it was implemented, but the actual gas tax increase revenue has not increased. And that's due to efficiencies with cars and folks also choosing to, to drive electric Most of the cities that do have a gas tax are in the three cent range. But Portland does have a ten cent a gallon gas tax and Coburg has a six cent again, a gallon gas tax. And then Eugene is five cents. So there's only three cities that essentially are above the three cents per gallon. Then the Highway Trust Fund revenues that we receive, as I shared earlier, that's paid by a per capita amount. And this year's per capita was, is calculated at seventy-seven point nine one dollars per Next year, the, in Elco or League of Oregon Cities is projecting that the per capita will actually decrease to seventy-six point four two. And then the following year, twenty-three through twenty-four, it would decrease to seventy-six point one one. So as those numbers decrease and our population increase, we may still see an increase in the actual Highway Trust Fund revenues. But the, we, we will be experiencing a decrease in per person. I think historically because the gas tax revenues are not increasing over years. Then one of, whoops, one of the revenue scenarios is, is that if we were to, the council was to increase the gas tax by one cent, we would receive approximately a hundred and twenty to a hundred and thirty-five thousand additional dollars a year. If we did a, doubled the gas tax to six cents, we would receive an additional three fifty to four hundred thousand a year. And then if it was increased five cents per gallon, it would generate an additional six hundred to six hundred and seventy-five thousand a year. Another funding option that has been used by several cities in the state of Oregon is a transportation utility fee. And that is a, a fee that's added to all the current utility billings. It is a dedicated fund to transportation improvements and maintenance. And there are two ways that the transportation utility fee can be calculated. The first is just a straight across the board, flat fee per month on each utility bill. Or the second method is to base the fee based on trip generation. So in that case, there, for a single family home, the trip generation's all going to be the same. But for businesses that have a higher trip generation, so whether it's like a fast food, coffee kiosk or our department stores and that, they would pay a higher level of transportation utility fee based on their transportation counts. And there are approximately twenty Oregon cities that currently utilize the transportation utility fee. Two of them, there was two others, but they actually had sunset clauses in their ordinance that they adopted and the, the fee didn't get, they didn't pass another ordinance to continue it. So currently, right now, there are three thousand nine hundred and twenty-one accounts that would be considered for a transportation utility fee. Presently, our minimum charge on a utility fee is ninety dollars and nineteen cents per, per month. And that's before they, you would calculate whatever gallons of usage that was used for the water or in the sewer. And so approximately the average home spends about a hundred dollars per month currently on their utility bill. So anything, the transportation utility fee would go right on top of, of that. The estimated or kind of a revenue scenario is, is that if there was a five dollar per month fee added to the utility billing, it would have generated approximately two hundred and thirty-five thousand a year. And if you, if it was a ten dollar per month fee, it would generate just shy of a half a million dollars. Another funding mechanism that has been used would be a property tax levy for transportation projects. Two local county cities that do that is the city of Eugene and the city of Springfield. So Eugene is, has been pretty successful. They passed their general obligation transportation levy, I think about fifteen years ago. And they have been able to just renew it each year. The way that works is they, they have asked the voters for a certain amount of money and that money is dedicated. They present projects that the citizens would, would expect to see done if their general obligation, if their levy was passed. Both Eugene and Springfield have a, a body that oversees and it's kind of a citizen body that reports out to the general public that, you know, yes, those projects were done and they've met the citizen oversight committee's expectations for what took place that year for the construction projects. Currently, the property tax values can increase up to three percent per year based on the property tax assessment. That's pretty standard. There's not very, there hasn't been many instances in my life of public service that, that property values haven't gone up three percent. They were close one year, I believe back in two thousand and eight. There was a stretch there where the property values were decreasing, but they never did get below what the assessed values were. So they, they still experienced a three percent increase per year. If the revenue scenario here is, is that if the public would approve a fifty cent per thousand tax increase to their property tax bill, it would, it, based on the, this last year's evaluation of property in, in the city limits, it would generate approximately six hundred and thirty thousand dollars per year. There would be about a five percent uncollect, collectible rate. So it dropped, it decreased it just a touch, but it, it would, it would generate a significant amount of money. And then the, so for instance, if you had a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar valued home, the value, the homeowner would be paying approximately a hundred and seventy-five dollars per year in increased property taxes, which comes out to about fourteen dollars and sixty cents per month. If a dollar was presented to the citizens for a vote, it would generate approximately one point two five million dollars. And for that same three hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, it would cost three hundred and fifty dollars a year or just shy of thirty dollars a month for the increase in their property tax. There's also the possibility of using the local improvement district. That is, you would, we would create a district boundary or a geographical area in the city limits of, of an area of the street that we wanted to focus on street maintenance. It would require that less than thirty-three percent of the people in that district, they have the ability to opt out of the district, remonstrate out. And if less than, if more than thirty-three percent of the folks elect to opt out and the LED is, LID is, is terminated. And so the challenge there is that if it was approved in year one and year three, it was, it was terminated. All the projects that were funded based on that level of income, that money could potentially disappear and put the city in a precarious position to pay the remaining of the cost of that debt. Urban Renewal District is another option that's out there. It is specifically, it, it is designed to, to address blighted areas. And once again, a, a district would be created and is targeted at improving the blight. It's, it uses tax increment financing. So when there's the tax, when the Urban Renewal District is created, it caps the, the new, well, the property tax rate at that level. And then any new investment that comes in would be dedicated to addressing the projects that are listed in the district. Sometimes that works pretty good if you pick areas where you, let's say we, we redo some streets in an area and we don't see any tax increment because there's no new investment in that area, you don't generate the revenue to actually service the debt that was taken out. So this is just another vehicle, but it may not be a, a practical one. The next thing the city could do is bond. So we could take the six hundred, hypothetically, the six hundred thousand or six hundred and fifty thousand per year of money that is left over after paying operating expenses in our budget and we could bond. We could take out a ten million dollar bond and it would take six hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year for ten years to, actually twenty years, to pay that back at two point one percent interest. This is just an example. We did a little bit more research that Bert did in the finance department. And if we were to take out a loan for six point three million dollars at three and a half percent interest and pay it back with the dedicated revenue from the street fund, it would require one point three, six million dollars a year over five years to service that debt. If we were to take it at four percent interest, it would almost be one point four million dollars a year just to service the debt. So, and that's actually, well, it's ten semi-annual payments, so. And the last thing, I believe it's the last thing we have received over the years, we occasionally get a inquiry from companies that want to offer their services. There's companies out there that would essentially come in and do the design work. They would also oversee the, the construction of the projects and they would also finance the projects. Bert and I interviewed or spoke with one company and they, they would certainly do a design build finance option. And they charge an additional four to half percent administration fee for that. And the rates, the current rates would be based on the current rates that the federal government's loan rates. The other thing that they mentioned too is, is that they would take the city streets or we would need to use the city streets as collateral for the loan. I'm not a hundred percent sure how that works. Do they come re-pave the streets if we don't pay the bill? But that was an interesting learning experience, but I don't know that that's practical for the city either. So some of the challenges that we face when we were looking at these projects, the picture here in this slide is, shows a portion of R Street. It is between Harrison and I believe it's Jason Lee to the, to the south. And you can see that gray gumbo clay is essentially right underneath the pavement. This was a section of road, the individual that lives in this area takes home a, a heavy piece of equipment each night, parks it in his driveway and leaves every morning. And that repetitive in, out from that heavy piece of equipment, essentially, there was a foot deep sinkhole that was created because there was really no base underneath the pavement. When the pavement failed, it just deteriorated quickly. So currently, the pricing is for these quotes that I've shared with you are, it's, they're fairly unstable and they're short timeframes. Also, the other item is, is that there's a, a high demand for the products used for pavement and aggregate. There's a lot of street funding projects that are being undertaken by the state of Oregon and the various different cities and counties. So we have, we do have a demand that's for those products and also for the labor that was, that it would take to the companies to do the work. And we've, I've talked a little bit about it. The oil prices have gone up, but over the last two years, we've seen an increase in oil prices that's, that's a hundred percent. And the increase in labor has gone up. Cost of living is, has skyrocketed this past year. So those are all drivers that increase the cost of the project. The final item I wanted to share was that the ADA accessibility requirement, Americans' Disability Act requires that when we do a, essentially a repaving or we do a reconstruction, we're mandated by law to bring the, all the or we do a reconstruction, we're mandated by law to bring the, all the sidewalks, crosswalks, driveway approaches, various different things that are adjacent to the reconstruction up to ADA, the, the current ADA standards. Some of the things that we do that don't require those increases or require those upgrades is cracked ceilings, slurry ceiling and chip ceiling, though they don't require the, the upgrades to be done. And then finally, each, I believe the council knows that the property owner is under city code required to maintain their sidewalks and keep them in good repair. They would, these projects that we would do inside the city, there, there would be an expectation that the adjacent landowner would need to improve their sidewalks and, so that they meet the, the new standards. And the last thing I wanted to share here, well, I got actually a couple more things, is, is that today, the average American that drives on the roads, if they're not maintained well, can experience up to $500 a year in costs to their vehicles. It would be, you know, alignment costs, it potentially could be a tire that was, went bad, shock absorbers, various different things, just so the maintenance on, on people's vehicles on poorly repaired, poor streets, an average up to $500 per year. And finally, I wanted to share that in preparing for this presentation, the, back in 2003, there was a similar presentation made to then city council and that report shared that the deferred maintenance back in 2003, that if they could generate enough money, the backlog of costs to bring their streets and address all the poor streets in the, in the city would have cost 2.5 million dollars. And today, we fast forward almost 20 years, the cost is somewhere in the neighborhood of 25 to 30 million dollars. So as we, as we move forward and we're not able to address the, to keep the, at least keep the streets from deteriorating any further, we just compound the costs at a later date. So with that, I would love to answer your questions. So just be, just before we do though, Richard, what do I click on to get rid of the?
You click on the close. Close or cancel, close your sharing or it should, or I could probably even take it away from you.
There we go.
And I just want to add a couple of things. In the past, over the years, as we, as we've seen gas prices go up, we've had a few times when gas prices go up and what we see with our gas tax, then it drops or it stays the same. People kind of react to the increase in prices of gas. So we'll probably see that now where our motor vehicle fuel tax will drop. And it usually takes about six months for it to come back up again to where it was. And it'll stay there. It never goes up more because it's based on gallons. And so it'll generally take about six months for it to go back up if the prices don't drop. If the prices drop, then it, then it'll rebound faster. And is it right that Cobert has both their 6 cents for motor vehicle fuel and they have a TUF? They have a transportation utility fee?
Yes, that's correct, yeah.
So, you know, there are some of the cities that have both at Cobert with their high gas tax and then also having a TUF in place. They're generating a pretty good amount of revenue for their roads. They don't have that many with Cobert. And typically in the past, LIDs have been used for neighborhood work, more in a centralized neighborhood. I just wanted to kind of emphasize that, that it generally works better for a small area, especially for residential streets, because those don't have the, the global impact on all the transportation. So it's kind of hard to use gas tax or, or other revenue to, to fund those and use the LID money.
Councilor Fleck?
Okay, well, I'm gonna just kind of roll through my notes here. So gas tax, I thought I heard somewhere along the lines that they had changed that to where we could implement it, but it was still have to have a vote on that one. And I have to tell you, I think that that is DOA at this point. You know, with the price of gas jumping 50 cents over a weekend, there is no way a gas tax is passing. A transportation utility fee, it's interesting because all of your estimates are on flat fee, which I would never support. You know, we have to have a fee that's based on the impact on those streets. And so the only way I'd ever support that would be if it was, you know, obviously the residential would be a flat rate, but commercial would need to be on trip, uh, trip generation. Although it's kind of interesting, when I was reading the Vanita one, they actually did it as a flat one, but as a higher rate. And I read on another one where it went based on truck traffic. So I mean, I'm not saying, you know, that it has to be trip generation, but it needs to be based on the, the impact on the roads. Clearly out on Gateway, those trucks are absolutely destroying that road. And so that's a much greater, you know, impact on our street system than, you know, other types of businesses or residential properties. I got one question on that. So will a transportation utility fee pay for water, wastewater and storm underneath the roads as well?
I believe it's bound under the same constitution that it goes into the street fund and it is a street fund revenue that cannot pay for the utilities. Those would have to be out of utilities.
And that was my fear. One thing I did love in what I was reading on the one report is that they actually created a committee to review these things, which is one thing I really want to recommend for this group is to create a subcommittee of counselors, planning commissioners and citizens to kind of kick these around. Because I think we're going to need one buy-in from the community. Clearly, the last time we went out for a gas tax, we failed terribly. Yet in the same breath, people are beating us up on the conditions of our streets, which is very frustrating because we get the complaints, we try to put something on the ba, on the ballot to fix them and, and the gas prices weren't, weren't huge at that point, yet we still were shot down on that. Property tax in a bond is appealing, it has been to me for years because that will pay for your water, wastewater and storm on top of the street. Because as most folks who've been here for a while know, it makes absolutely zero sense to fix the street if we don't replace the pipes under it. Because when we cut through those streets to fix pipes later, that cut creates an opportunity for water to get into the basin. From some of the presentations we've had at the city before, is that water getting into the base is what absolutely will destroy a road. Which is why I love Mr. Stewart's program in the last few years of doing the, the ceiling. Because if we can keep that water out, we could really save the life of our roads. And in fact, from one of the early reports I remember is as much as 10 years, it can improve the lifespan of a, of a street. So I do like the idea of a bond, although, you know, unfortunately, the, the downside of that is with, you know, prices of properties and especially rentals right now, that will further per the bind because those property taxes will then, you know, not only go on the homeowners, but on the renters as well. Urban renewal districts, you know, the downside is that was we need to get our other partners jurisdictions involved. I think there's some real appeal for doing urban renewal. Clearly, if you look at some of our alligator streets and the severity of some of them, I think that's a pretty, blight is a pretty good description of some of our roads. So I, I, I'm not necessarily opposed to those, but as you mentioned, it can't be citywide. So that's kind of a piecemeal approach.
And generally, you want the blight to be the property that's not the city's property.
Oh, gotcha.
Because if it's not lighted off, you're not going to see the property tax increase that you need for the increment financing.
I gotcha.
You'd need to have significantly bare land or you'd need stuff that just is, gotta be torn down and restarted. So, yeah.
Yeah, well, that makes some total sense. Bonding doesn't make any sense to me in that we're basically, we're not improving our revenue at all. All we're doing is we're borrowing a bunch of money to fix the roads right now. And so ultimately, those roads are more expensive because we are going to be paying interest on that money. And we're really not doing anything to continue improving the situation of the streets. So I'm not in favor of bonding. I mean, obviously, if we had short-term projects we really needed to do, that's a different story. But I mean, as a long-term solution, I don't think that's a viable one. LIDs, when did they change to where it takes a vote of the citizens to implement an LID? Because that was not the case back on the Johnson LID.
Yeah, it was, basically it was, if you didn't remonstrate or didn't oppose it, then it went through.
Right. And I, and it seems like the rate was higher back then too. It seems like it was like 50% or something, although I'm guessing at that one. I don't remember.
I think it's been 33 for quite a while.
Now, a lot of properties will have non-remontion agreements as well, but that is a pretty low threshold. And LIDs are extremely unpopular, so that would not be a, a great, a great way to go. So that's kind of off the top of my head, some of the, the thoughts I had. I will say overall, I'm, I'm not going to suggest at this point that we put off increasing revenue, but I'm going to put, suggest that we put off major capital projects until the price of gas comes down. I think we're shooting ourselves in the foot if we start doing major projects right now with the price. I mean, this is like lumber, you know, gosh, you know, if we were going to go out at my, the bid to build a fence on my property doubled, whereas if I wait a few, you know, another year, I think that that price will probably, hopeful, hopefully come down, you know? But I mean, the census here too, I mean, we saw the price spike to $4 years ago and then come down. I, I really think now is not the time to do those projects. I'm not suggesting though, that it isn't the time to get the revenue and then do the projects we need to do. That's kind of my, my first thoughts. And actually, as you were giving your presentation, Mr. Stewart, it's kind of interesting. I was looking at the street lighting expense and I know I've replaced all of the lights in my home with LEDs and I'm wondering if that's something the city could do to also lower those ongoing expenses? Because I'm literally getting twice the light with less than half of the power usage. So in the long run, that might be a, an investment that we want to look at as a city for our street lighting.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor and Councilor Fleck, about three years ago, we had a company called Ameresco come in and they did a energy audit for the city for various different projects that we could do to reduce our energy consumption that would, and the money saved from the energy consumption would actually pay for the costs of the upgrades. At that time, they did an analysis of the streetlights and it was right on the verge of, yeah, we could make that investment and we, we'd have to pitch in a little additional cost until the debt serviced. But the, it just didn't show the necessary savings to do the project. That being said, whenever we have an opportunity to change to an LD, LED, we've done that. We'll, we'll pay the extra dollars when we have to replace the streetlight or when we add one in. We're doing that now, but we'll continue to monitor it because that change is pretty regular. But it may, it may be something that we would do in the near future.
And you also have to remember several of our, a large portion of your streetlights are PP&amp;L. PP&amp;L has a flat amount that they charge regardless of the power that's used for the streetlight. And EPUDs are the ones that are, we typically get, they do a subdivision and then those are turned over to us and we're charged based on the power usage a little more on those. And those are generally newer ones too. So it, that's one of the reasons why that doesn't make as big of a difference in, in the, the use of power. We did do probably, I think it was in 96 or 95, before I got here, they did a streetlight audit and they went around and removed a whole bunch of streetlights that people had asked. I want a streetlight in front of my house and they put them in. They went back through in order to reduce that, that bill, they put them just on corners and they took out the ones that were mid-blocks or in places that didn't need to be there and they were benefiting just somebody's yard or whatever and tried to narrow that down. That's what, if you can remove some, that could be a way to do it as well. There are communities, they don't have streetlights and you come into the community and streets are dark and people use their porch lights and stuff like that. So that is, that is one area. Another area is our street sweeping. Can we move more of that into stormwater? And if they take care of a lot more of that there rather than in streets? Those are some of the adjustments that we looked at, but as you look at the revenue and the expenditures, there's not a lot of movement there to make the street fund have more money without doing revenue.
And I think just as a last thought, I, I think I would stay at the bottom end to at least maintain, you know, the ratings that we have now. I mean, obviously, if we decide, you know, yes, this is great and folks are supporting it, then we could, you know, maybe look at it again, but I, I would also stay on the low end.
Councilor Roberts? I liked what Mike said about the commission. I think with the gas thing you're talking about it being up to the roof and some of the options, I think in order to gain something with the time waiting for that gas price to hopefully come down, start a commission, get the public involved, educate them on what the options are so they understand what we're up against. I think that's a great idea, Mike.
Councilor Savage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had some very similar notes as Councilor Fleck. When I looked at the lighting, I wondered if we had gone to green lighting, so I appreciate your conversation about that. Anytime that we can switch to LED, it sounds like we are, which is really great. I also had questions about the street sweepers. If it's $82,000 a year, how often do they run? Do they run an average of?
Just about every day.
Is, and the need is there to have them run every day or?
In order to get all the streets and cycle through, they'll do Main Street, what, twice a week or?
Yeah, they, they do Main Street twice a week and then they do a circuit. And I believe it takes up close to two weeks to get completely through town.
And it does make a difference. I mean, if, if you, in those months where our street sweeper has been down, the streets get really gritty and grimy and, yeah, it, it does make a difference. And that's, that's why, you know, do we move that into a storm utility and, and pay for it out of those revenues? Because, yeah, that's, that's one of the big purposes or benefits of the street sweeping is it keeps that out of the storm drainage system and out of the river.
I came into tonight, you know, I knew this conversation was going to be happening and so I've been milling around the different options without this wonderful presentation, which, thank you, Mr. Stewart, you did excellent putting this together and putting all the numbers down, answering a lot of questions ahead of time. I was favoring a gas tax and the last three days, I've completely changed my mind. It's not going to fly and I have to say, adding something onto the utility bill, I don't think is going to fly. I think that's going to make folks really, really upset. I love the idea of the commission, that, that does bring in some buy-in, but what is that going to be? Another six people? We've got 10,000 people that we need to convince or potentially 3,700 folks on utilities that have these options. This is a really tough decision. It's super tough. It's, I'm glad we're having this conversation and I have to admit, I don't know what to do. I'm curious as to what are the things that we can do that don't require a vote? And what are the things that do require the vote? I mean, all of it, I think should, there should be some buy-in for the folks, but in short term, just to clear my own head, what are these, out of these different options, what can be implemented that don't require a vote? And what does need a vote? Is there a quick way to answer that?
Yeah, the, the gas tax does require a vote now. When we did the original 3 cent, it didn't. And we had, in fact, I, I think we had, had letters to the editor after it was implemented, supporting it and giving the gas stations a run for their money because when the Because when, the day it went into effect, they raised their gas prices five cents or something, and it was a three-cent gas tax, and people went furious at the gas stations instead of us. Because, hey, it's a three-cent increase, and you raised it five, that's ridiculous. The tough, the, the transportation utility fee, you can do that without a vote. However, if you don't have a buy-in, it could go to a vote. I mean, those are, every one of the actions you take could be referred back to the voters.
And that's adding it on to the utility bill?
Yeah, that'd be adding it on to the utility bill. Yeah. The property tax, yeah, you're gonna have to go to a vote on that. And, you know, one of the things that's nice about the gas tax is it's getting some revenue from people that are using our roads that don't live here. And, you know, using the transportation utility fee or the property tax or all the others are on people that actually live here and are using the roads. But you have a large population, we have a lot of traffic that comes off the freeway and uses the roads. And so that's one of the things, and that was one of the selling points back when we did it originally, is, hey, this is, this is gonna bring revenue in from all those people that come through and stop and get gas here and then drive on, and, or come in and drive through the community.
Well, and that's why I was leaning on the, the gas tax. I've been talking with folks, what would you support? You know, I wanna pick people's brains. And what I hear the most from people who live outside of town is, I drive into town, I buy my gas in town, I use those roads every single day, and I don't contribute. So even property tax, that's still gonna be for folks that live in town.
Right, just in town.
And gas tax is the only thing that will pull people in that don't already live here.
We don't, we didn't talk about toll roads. Those are something that typically you find in Oregon very much. But, yeah, that's, you, you put toll goose up all around town, anybody coming into town, but that's not gonna go over.
I, I definitely like the idea of having a committee come together with some buy-in from the community and not just have it be what, what we think would be the best, but let's talk to the folks that are gonna be paying it or not paying it and why, you know, and have them come up with some ideas, too. I think that's gonna create some ownership in the conversation. I don't think that we're gonna be paying $4.50 forever, but they do keep saying there's no end in sight. I don't, I don't know what the answer is. You know, if we could pay $4.50 now, boy, when it goes down another 50 cents, and oops, we've just kept that 3 cents. It seems like it should be reasonable, but it's, it's a tough place to be. This is, this is a hard conversation.
And as you see, more efficiency or different fuels go on, you know, the, the motor vehicle tax, the fuel tax is gonna continue to drop, unless we can figure out a way to tax electricity.
Counselor Stenit?
I, um, I wondered if I might ask a few questions before I kind of register my opinion on our options. The first was, Faye, are we, would you say that we're staffed and ready to optimize the amount of grant funding that we could, could receive? Are we kind of doing the best we can in that way?
So internally, we don't, but this, this past year, we were able to contract with ElCog to get out the EDA grant. We also used Christina Lund's grant-writing team to do the Bohemia Park. So as we've become aware of grant opportunities, we can contract with either of those entities, or there might be others out there to help us with the grant writing. But internally, Mr. Mongan's done a few grants, but, yeah, we, we don't have the grant expertise we had when Ms. Ferguson was here.
You, you think going forward, we'll, we'll be comfortable contracting when we need to to get?
Yeah, so, so just, just for instance, the Main Street grant, the almost $6 million grant that we applied for, it cost us $10,000 with lane council governments to prepare that grant. And it's very, it, it's a very intense, close to 100 pages worth of material that was submitted. So it was a pretty good, I felt really good about that expense. And they have the expertise, the folks that wrote the grant there, they work daily in the transportation realm. So, so we had, hopefully, some, I, I felt good about the, the expertise and that was available. And, and they, then they wrote it very quickly for us.
Great. And the other thing was that, that list of eight projects, I assume those were kind of the worst, worst of the worst. Were, were those kind of, was there a hierarchy to that list? Was it, was it weighted in terms of the importance of the road for traffic, you know, and its use and things like that? Or was it just based on its deterioration, I guess?
I, I'll just be honest with you. I, I just picked eight segments that I felt needed to be addressed sooner than later, and those were the, those were the streets that they were. They did correspond with the pavement management report that we did have. They, they were ones that needed to be rebuilt. But I didn't place a priority, one, two, or three, there's, there's no priority to it. It was really, my, my goal was to try to come up with some projects that, that, you know, the council could see, touch, feel, and, and understand what the costs were gonna be to bring that into 100% PCI index.
So what, I mean, if you, if you were gonna take a guess, what would we do first? What should we do first? And then, you know?
I, I am concerned about Row River Road and that section in front of the car dealerships. There is a lot of log truck traffic, and that road could essentially blow up on us. If we had the right conditions with rain, freezing, and with log trucks on it, like we've seen in the past, that, that road will, that, that road will fall apart fairly quickly. And then, you know, there's just pieces like the segment between, it's Harrison Road, between River Road and R Street, that segment is really bad. School buses are on it pretty regular. It, it's, it would be a priority. Gosh, it's hard for me to, to say exactly, but those are a couple that, that pointed out. The work that we did on River Road this past year with the crack ceiling, I know it really didn't super-help the rideability of that road, but it actually, when Amerio was there and they were out surveying the condition of the road, they're interested to find out what their computer program comes back, because they said, you know, we didn't expect that road to have that kind of work done on it. And just the crack ceiling, it'll be interesting to see how much that extended the life of that River Road site, road there, so.
The other thing, the, if we went out to, to increase property taxes, would we be in danger of compression or kind of maximizing our?
There is some, isn't there, Richard, some level of compression? I don't think we are right now.
But when you, when you go out and vote on a capital project, those are exempt. Those are outside of the, the limitations. Now, if we were doing a levy, where it stayed a levy and was always a street levy from now on, then there would be compression. But when you do specific bonded, specific projects and do those capital project ones, those are exempt from the, the limitations of ballot measure 10, 550, whatever, 47.
So, you know, hearing all this information and these options, it just seems like another difficult conversation without an easy answer, that no one really has managed to solve that, that, that I can think of, to anyone's satisfaction. Maybe communities got ahead of this earlier, spent more money long ago, and are able to, to maintain better streets. I think the short answer is that we need help. I mean, unless we're, we need more money and we need help getting it. I, I like the idea of a, a commission. I like something in just about anything that pulls the public into this conversation. I, I don't, I think a, a lot of people maybe aren't too interested in these details, but if we could make, if we could change that, we might get somewhere. I think distrust in government is pretty high at this point. I think the notion that, you know, we have the money, we're just not using it properly is, is a pretty common one, or that we're just pocketing it and, you know, taking it out the back door. And I think we have to counter those, those, you know, shortcuts to a nuanced opinion on this as much as we can. I like the property tax idea. I think the gas tax, again, I would agree, is, is a non-starter with gas skyrocketing the way it is. I think taking something like a property tax increase to the people and coupling it with a robust, you know, not just information campaign, but also a, a listening campaign, and the notion that this does cost money, and, yeah, we don't have it, as much as you wanna believe we do. That's just kind of where I'm at.
Counselor Irvin?
Hey, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Stewart and Mr. Marius, for putting this together and for giving this opportunity. I appreciate it. I represent the position that this is one of the fundamental things that is required of a city, is to maintain its infrastructure. And I think it's one of the ways that we set ourselves, that we maintain a reputation. I think streets impact everything else in life, how we maintain our homes, just the level of cleanliness that we're gonna operate with, and, and says a lot. We obviously don't have the money to even, seems like, maintain our current dilapidated state. So we need more money. We need, I think we need to maintain these roads, and I'd like to see them as good as possible. The voters are ultimately, it sounds like, gonna have to make the decision on how good, based on how much they're gonna be able to, to bear. But I think it's our responsibility to put that to them. I'm in favor of, of pretty much any of these in conjunction with each other. It's, I think it's, you know, partly our responsibility to just say, here's, here's the standard that we want, here's what it costs. Too bad if you don't trust that, you know, we're doing the right thing. If we are doing the right thing, why, why even bother ourselves with worrying about if people believe that? And then go, just go about it. So bond, it makes sense to do some bonding for some bigger projects. Part of, I know we had talked about this in a previous work session. There was some limitation to becoming, I think, Mr. Stewart, you were talking about, I was suggesting, why don't we just become road builders and move out our services to other communities as well and invest in the, the equipment to do these things ourselves and save costs over time? Why don't we replace any roads that we're doing with concrete, you know, 100 to 200-year lifespan, rather than just a continued maintenance program? Spend the money upfront. Inflation, our whole economy is based on inflation, so it's always gonna go up and trend up. It just depends on how fast, or if the bubble pops. So, I mean, invest now, do as good of a job as possible now, and then just, you have to swallow the costs. So also, I think, yeah, it's good to talk with, get community understanding up of what's involved. But at the end of the day, this, this is one of the fundamental things that a city is supposed to do, is provide this infrastructure. So I think it, it should have higher priority than a lot of other things that we're talking about in general. So that's, that's my opinion.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, Counselor Irvin, in regards to what our city can, our city staff can do, there is a city statute that kind of guides us that certain, over a certain level of cost, then it requires it to go out to the, to be bid out. I kind of feel, in some respects, we were kind of on that edge right now. Take, for instance, the crack ceiling. So, crack ceiling that we did this past year, we did an estimate of 400,000 lineal feet of, of crack ceiling. It cost us $50,000 in product, $10,000 to rent the machine. And then, I'm guessing, three months' worth of our labor was, would probably push us close to $150,000 worth of total costs to do that. If we were to contract with a contractor to do that work, it, it goes anywhere from 90 cents to a dollar, a lineal foot. So on the, the higher side of things, that if we would have contracted that work out, it would have cost us $400,000. In, you know, according to my understanding and talking to legal counsel, our true costs that we spent were under the limit. But if we would have contracted that out, we would have been way over what the costs that we would, would have paid to somebody else, triggering that, that project to, to go out for bid. So, so I'm trying to be mindful that we don't get in sideways with the Department of, Bureau of Labor and, and, but still try to maximize our dollars in the effort that we put into maintaining our streets. So there's kind of a fine line there.
And I, I, oh, go ahead, Counsel Irvin.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to respond to that, I'm always trying to problem solve on the fly. What if we bought the equipment to do it? I don't know if that triggers that amount, if it's not an actual project. But you buy the capital equipment, and then in your bid process, you factor in that they're gonna use your equipment and reduce the overall cost and just, I mean, are there ways to reduce, you know, to get around this, what I would consider, I don't, I mean, I don't know why the state wants to limit us from doing things more efficiently. But, yeah, are there ways around? I mean, it sounds like we're working up to the limit as we can now, but are there other ways to do that? And just to stretch our dollars?
Counsel Irvin, I'm, I'd have to research that a little bit, and also probably have to do a perform audit. Some of the equipment needed, paving machines, and, and those are very expensive. And if we didn't utilize them enough to, I guess, justify the, the costs that we put into that, I just wanna look at that before I, I would answer. But it would take more research for me to do that.
And I, I supported the gas tax when we put it on last time. And, and I, I do like that the best because the, before, when we put it on the ballot last time, Sixth Street was terrible. And 90% of the people that complained to me about Sixth Street lived out of town and drove Sixth Street every day. I'm lucky if I drive Sixth Street half a dozen times a year, because it's on the side of town I never go to. So it's, you know, you're putting that cost on the, the whole community, not just the taxpayers in the city, even though it is the city street. So that's, that's where I come into it. I know everybody's upset over the, the way the gas is. My son told me today that my daughter-in-law filled up a Costco in El Paso, Texas, the home of gas, and it was $4.50 a gallon for premium. So they're as high as we are.
And I, and I guess I'll throw out, and Faye was part of this, this discussion when it happened before, you know, this is something that, you know, maybe we get with the other cities, and we go to the county again and say, hey, we need to talk about this and do some things, because the county's the only one that can do a vehicle registration fee and add that in. So then you'd be catching, not the people who live out of town, but you'd be at least catching some of those alternative fuel vehicles and, and try to do that again. And I do wanna, not to throw, not to throw water on the commission idea and everything, but the county had that. When you looked at the vehicle registration fee and, and doing things on a county-wide basis, they had a committee, pretty good-sized committee, if I remember, that citizens and chambers and everybody involved, and it still failed.
It failed miserably, if I remember.
It failed miserably. And, and there was a lot of work that had been done to try to, to bring people up to speed on that. So it's, I mean, you've all hit it on the head. This is a really, really tough issue. I did wanna comment on the grants. Grants for transportation stuff, especially roads, are extremely competitive. And, you know, us getting the $1.2 million grant for the safe routes to school was, was outstanding. I mean, because they just started the program, we had that on the shelf, ready to go, and we were able to get that application in, and basically, we competed with Portland. And I don't know, could we do it again? And then more, more of the cities are participating in that, and the competition is really, really tight. But, yeah, that's. yeah, that's, that's another area that do we, do we go to the state and say, hey, we need more money for transportation on the local level? Or some of these rules lifted a little bit and Oregon is a, a state that has a strong support of union labor and that's why you see the, the little Davis Bacon and then you have the big Davis Bacon from the federal. That's why you see the, the requirement that we have to go out for bid if we spend more than so much on a project. You know, when we painted the arm, the library last time, we figured that, hey, if we did this, it was going to cost us this and it threw us over and we had to go out for bid. I mean, and those kinds of things. And they watched those. So we, it is, it is a tough, tough spot that we're in with this. I do want to say that if you are looking at a commission and you are looking at things that might need to go to a vote, putting a commission together and working on that for the next year would probably work just right. There are certain elections that typically are a little better at doing elections for capital projects or things that need to go to a vote. You don't want to do it this year. You want to do it in an off year and you want to do it in May. And, you know, there are other things that you want to take into consideration to, to at least help some of the odds of getting things passed. So those are, those are some things to, to consider. And if you did form a committee, I mean, you're also going to want to talk to the citizens and say, hey, we're working on this. So when they say, but the street's still not faced, it's going to take another year to get there, folks. But yeah.
How big can a commission be?
You can make it however big you want, but if you want it to work.
You keep it small.
Don't make it too big.
I understand that. Well, and I, I think you, you hit it there too, is having things ready because that's what happened with the Woodson Street to, to the bridge on, on Highway 99 is we had a shovel-ready project in there for bike pit vehicle and, and ODOT came up with a grant or money or however they're paying for it, but ODOT came up with a reason to do it. We had one ready to go and and that'll help.
And, and hopefully that helped us with the EDA grant for Main Street. And, you know, that it was, it was something that had already been done and was sitting on the shelf, ready to go. Just needed to be updated a little bit and got sent in. So hopefully we'll see something there, but.
Council Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. You know, another comment I got from a lot of people here in the community was when we did the glass gas tax, we hadn't done anything on the roads for a while. And it's that gas tax, I was told by several voters that if that gas tax was there after we did Sixth Street, they would have voted for it. Because they, they just felt that the nothing, you know, they were going to vote for something and nothing was going to get done.
And, and that's tough. And I think the mayor hit that on the head too, is there are people who don't drive on parts of town where work had been done.
Right.
I mean, this last year during the Safe Routes to School, there's people that are complaining that we didn't do any road projects last year.
Go look at that one road. It's brand new.
Yeah. I mean, go, we did two miles of sidewalks and a mile of road and people don't know because they don't ever go to that side of town and.
If you, if you don't have kids in Lincoln, you probably don't drive very often.
You know, and we rebuilt railroad crossings and those are expensive and we have to pay for those. The railroad doesn't have to pay for them. And it takes us two years to build up enough money to do some of those projects too. So.
Council Flack first and then.
Yeah. And, and I think this is where we can hash out a lot of things, you know, for, for example, if we go out for a, a bond, you know, I think we need to focus on the collectors and arterials and stuff that impacts the whole city. But we also need to have, you know, strategies for the residential streets like, you know, the ones that are failing.
There's Brian.
Thank you. Yeah. And, and so, you know, there, there's, you know, and once again, I think we, I'd like to look at that LID and whether that needs to be, you know, voted on because it seems like on the local level that may be an option because as unfavorable as they are, they're a very low-interest way of getting something done. I, I'm not sure that I, you know, support it. We've had this conversation for years. Richard can attest that, you know, do you charge a homeowner for the street a second time? You know, because that street was put in and paid for the first time around and turned over to the city and then so do you go back to them? So that's, that's a discussion I think a committee can have and like I said, I, I really fully support what Council Urban says, that it is our job to make this decision. But clearly I think we need to get buy-in. I think we need to, I love the idea of taking a year to do this because I think that as we get more publicity and even criticism, I, I mean, that's what we should welcome is criticism. Okay. Gosh, if you're, don't like this idea, what is your suggestion? You know, let's get people looking at the, the information. And if there are better Isaiah's out there, hey, I would love to hear them.
Council Savage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to echo what Counselor Urban said earlier about making sure it's done properly the first time. There's something to be said about paying more money upfront. It's only going to be cheaper right now. The longer we wait, the more expensive it's going to be and the longer it's going to take. So I just, I wanted to echo that because I very much feel that same way. And I really appreciated what Counselor Senate said, asking about grants. That is something else that I think is really, really important, having, you know, these eight projects on the back burner, ready to go, looking out for grants and whether we have to fund them all or we have them all ready to go and we snag a grant here and there. I think that's really, really important.
If I might, Mr. Mayor, I, I would share that those eight projects that we got the engineer's cost estimate are at a point where we could actually act fairly quickly because they're pretty detailed on the actual costs and what needs to take place. It's just lacking some construction documents. So with those, I, I feel that we could, if, if there was some money that was included in the infrastructure bill or something like that, that was allocated, we, we could move fairly quickly to, to apply for it and also use them for any other type of grant opportunity.
But, and, and just to give you an idea, some of those grants though, and especially the transportation ones, they want to see how it's going to affect the region. And they want to see how it's going to affect an economy and stuff like that. So several of those projects don't have any impact. They're a, a local street. We're able to do that with Main Street because it's tied to getting out to Lorraine and, and the downtown businesses. But yeah, it's, sometimes they tie other things to those, those transportation ones. And, and exactly what Counselor Urban said, you know, I live on a concrete street and.
Can anybody else hear, Mr. Myers, right now?
I'm not, I'm not hearing.
I can't either. We lost you. I live on a concrete street and I bet you're going to say something really good about it.
Is any other mics working for anybody else in council? We can't hear anybody from the council chambers.
I mean, it was built, I don't know how many years ago and it's still great except for my maple tree was.
Can you hear us there, Faye?
Uh, now we can now.
I'm not seeing any response, so I don't know if they can hear.
I don't think they can hear us either.
Yep. We can now.
Well, yeah, on the concrete, they should have, when they, when they developed the McTruck stop, they should have forced them into concrete in that whole gateway there because that is just terrible. You come out, you come out of the, the Chevron on a motorcycle. I know it's not fun.
Well, and you look at some of the concrete back there in the McTruck stop and it's beat to pieces too, so.
So, so I think that'd be, maybe one, take one of these projects and let's see what the price differential is, you know, especially if we start looking at the price of petroleum going up even half again. I mean, that could really make that an affordable choice.
Yeah. Council Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have, we have a, I don't know if it's an ordinance or a rule, but whatever it is that says all new construction has to have underground utilities. Can we do something for the future as well, like new roads need to be concrete or some specifications? I, I mean, it's in addition to what we would have to do for.
You could, I mean, you could do that and, but we have, we have a whole nother problem that you're going to talk about next week at council meeting and at a town hall that we're, we're trying to keep house costs down in housing. And anytime you put that kind of a requirement on developers, then that just makes building low-income housing even more difficult to do. So, I mean, yeah, it's.
Well, that sparked another thought that came up in the, in the meeting. I, I think Mr. Stewart referenced the damage that occurs. Do we have a way to quantify? Or do we have, I didn't even know that you could talk to the city or whatever. If you actually like bent a rim or popped a tire, had some alignment issues, is there a reporting mechanism? Can we quantify how much this is costing people? And because that would be really helpful to say, look, this is compared to the costs added to a utility or whatever, on average, people are spending this much money and just abnormal wear and tear.
Yeah. And, and we used that in the original gas tax discussion and there are those numbers out there nationally. We don't generally get very many of those and we turn them into our insurance and typically they're denied. And because that's just part of, hey, you're, here's the discretionary work. This is what's going on unless it was something that we did on the roadway and there was some liability. But yeah, if we tried to use those numbers, those that we turned on to insurance, we wouldn't get a really good picture at all because most of them, I mean, for alignment and tires, they don't typically come in. So the last one I think we just had was for 10th Street there, they hit one of the holes that had been dug for the new apartments and the gravel had been knocked out over the weekend that they came through and bent a rim on it. I don't think they, our insurance didn't cover it and it actually went to the contractor's insurance. I'm not sure where that's at. But yeah, there is a huge cost. I mean, and that's, that's one of the things, how do you get that message out? And maybe that committee is a way to help get that out. What is the cost associated with poorly maintained roads? You know, we could take, I joke about this, but you know, we could take and just let all our streets go to dirt and buy everybody SUVs and it's almost cheaper than taking care of the roads. It'd be historic.
Couldn't, couldn't we at least have gravel? Council Savage.
Thank you so much. Did I understand you, Mr. Myers? You said that if we were to set up a committee and have folks be on this committee, that we should probably mull it over and talk about it for about a year. So if we were to agree on this committee, then we could potentially bring it to vote May of next year. So this is a really good time to start that committee.
It is a great time to, to kind of talk about that and, and put something together that way. Yeah. And maybe we get the Main Street grant and we dig up the road and there's gold under it. So there's supposed to be.
Council Roberts.
Then if we do the committee, will there still be a planned road project in this fiscal year coming up? Or would we just halt all road projects until that commission makes a decision?
We probably won't see big ones, but I think Faye was going to do that Chip Seal project on River Road with the, the slurry stuff that mixed together to try to level that out a little, just to see how that works. And so we'll see some of those kinds of projects. We may see some spot work. We may dig out places and, and do the, the patching and stuff, but.
I just feel it would be beneficiary to the process to do what we can, as much as we can during the commission goes on. That's just my feeling on that.
Anyone else online or any more questions?
So I guess, just to jump in, so Rich, Mr. Myers, what would be our next, would, would we put this on an agenda to create a commission? What would be the next step?
Yeah. If, from the work session, if you, if you'd like us to, and if it's, there's a consensus on forming a, a commission or something like that, we can go ahead and start getting some materials and some samples together to bring to a future meeting of, hey, here's, here's a, a possible commission format and how to set that up. And we could get that, that moving. Yeah.
Those of you online, is that something you guys want to do?
Yeah. I guess I think I know what a commission means and would do, but I mean, is there going to be a decision that would come out of a commission that then would be for the council to vote on direction? Or are they going to be a fact, a fact-finding mission? Like what, is it just going to be talking? What's the, like, what would be the work product of the, of a commission?
And great question. I mean, do you want it to be an advisory commission to the council? Do you want it to, to come forward with, as an advisory commission, to come forward with recommendations to the council? For the council, the council's the one that's going to have to take the action and make the actual decisions. But, you know, that's kind of what I was envisioning that you wanted is have a, a, a commission that's much the size of, you know, maybe having a, it, it could even be the entire city council and like the budget committee where it's 14 people, the council and six other, seven others. Or you could do three council members and have more people on the commission. Those are all options and we can pull together, see what other samples are out there. We can look and see what Eugene Springfield's are and check other cities and bring you some samples back. And then you can kind of give us a better direction of what you want to do. But I think if there's consensus, we'll start moving that forward right away.
Yes, Council Urban.
Yeah. So I'm trying to think, what are we lacking? Are we just lacking the understanding of, of what the residents can tolerate? I mean, to me, that's the thing that stands out. What, what will, what, what condition of the roads do residents are, were they willing to pay for? That's, that's what I guess I'm unclear of. And so I don't, and I'm not sure if that's a commission's role to find that out, is that, if that's the best vehicle to, to learn that information? Other than that, I mean, this report is pretty detailed. I'm assuming there's, you know, information behind it and it's readily available to, to figure out what mechanisms we would have at our disposal to, to put forward. I, I feel like we could do that pretty effectively as a council. If, you know, if we determine this is, you know, what, what level the roads we need to get at, that's going to have a dollar amount fixed to it. Maybe there's going to be some discussion around, you know, the methodology to, to achieve the projects. And then from this, I, so I guess I'm, I'm trying to figure out what, if we really need a commission or if there's a, a better way. And so I, I guess I'd be interested what any, anybody else says, what, what are we missing? What information are we missing to make decisions on?
Mr. Stewart.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Council Urban, Coburg went through a multi-year process and they formed a street funding committee. They put strategic people on that committee. One of the major persons, one of the major people on that committee was the owner of the truck stop. And they, they actually understood that there was a, a need, but they also understood that anything that the council did was potentially going to impact their business. So I, I think it would be really important for us if, if the council wants to move forward with establishing a committee very similar. I would spend some time talking with the city manager up there and understanding, you know, exactly how the, the critical people that they tried to reach out to, to get involved, some influencers in the committee or in the community, really to work through the problem, explain just exactly what we did here today and get them to buy in. And if you have the right people, once this topic does get placed on the ballot, those individuals can carry the public. those individuals can carry the public message because they're not bound by the election law. When, you know, when the city does this, then we have to be neutral from, from this far, point forward. They may all be people that form a PAC, that put together a, a robust campaign to actually go out there and try to get the support of the, the citizens to vote yes. So there's, there's a, there is a, a method to, to try to, to, to give it the best foot forward and, and getting the support of the citizens. It's just like tonight, all we have is the Urban family listening in. But I can tell them, and of course, we'll, I'm sure that the Sentinel will be putting something in there. But, you know, this is an incredibly important topic to the community and we don't have any community, at least I can see from online.
Yeah, and no matter what we do, pretty much, it's going to be a vote by the citizens. So I guess getting their buy-in is going to be, because we have very little options to do anything different from a council point.
Councilor Savage?
Thank you. This reminds me of an analogy that my father would tell me about when I was really young. His very first church was in a little tiny town in New Meadows, Idaho. My father's a retired preacher of over 40 years. And every night, he loved to go lock all the doors of the church to make sure it was safe. And my grandmother scolded him and said, knock that off. You have got wonderful parishioners who want to help and can help. Give them that accountability and ownership of their own church. So even though this is different, this is that accountability piece for the local citizens of Cottage Grove and surrounding areas. This is their buy-in. This is that ownership that helps folks create that conversation where I was involved. They didn't make a decision without me. This is a decision that we made together. And I think that's the important piece of this conversation at committee. So I don't know if that helps, but that's the first thing I thought of.
So you got a direction?
Sure.
Does anyone have anything else? We can wrap it up a few minutes earlier, it looks like.
I guess I'll just say thank you to staff. I know this is a lot of work and I really appreciate the time and energy that you guys have put into this.
Okay, nothing else, we're adjourned.